It doesn't say 6:30, but my iPad says 6:30. So I will call the meeting to order. I don't believe I have anything to add to the agenda. I do want to take this opportunity though to thank Marla for all the work she did on putting together the baskets for the schools.
Thank you.
And then Patrick and Diane and Marla and Kim and I.
But it only worked because some of you folks like Kim and you and Patrick helped because I wouldn't have made it through to all the schools. I did not bother some people that I knew had work or little kids at home because I watched the weather that week. It was extremely cold and some people I knew wouldn't get out of work. So it worked. It was great.
It did. I think folks were very appreciative. So thank you for the effort that we put into that, Marla. Any comments from the public? I guess not. So let's move on to the consent agenda.
Do we have somebody from the public?
Oh.
Did you have someone?
Am I supposed to come in here right now?
You're welcome. Do you want to comment?
I want to say something to you all.
Introduce yourself.
Wait, so.
I love you already.
Yeah, I didn't expect this many people. My name is Dean Corkum. I'm a teacher here at the high school, have been for quite a while. And you'll have to excuse my attire, I'm coming from hockey practice. And the JV basketball game, but I just, you know, I wanted to publicly, I heard there was a meeting tonight, I just wanted to say thank you for the negotiations that happened in the last year or so because with all the things that are going on in all these other communities, it feels really refreshing and wonderful to have us feel valued as teachers because it's not always the case. And I think that folks on the school board need to know that it is appreciated very much. And I don't know if you guys hear from people, I'm on my way home, I remember I said, you know what, there's a meeting, I'm gonna see if I can come in and just say thank you from the bottom of my heart. And there's a reason why 30 years ago when I had the opportunity to come here and teach, I snatched it up in a heartbeat. And when I got here, I said, I'm never leaving again.
And here you are.
So here I am, 30 years later. So I just want to really, you know, for somebody who's been around, my biggest fear's always been the threat of a strike. And there's, I've never felt that once. And I, you know, just it was really, what you've given us is a gift considering the current climate of everything, so. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
We'll see you.
Thank you.
Come back and talk.
Yeah, forget my heart, I got a heart in here.
That's your other job.
Yeah.
The one thing is it couldn't happen if the union representatives were not receptive also. It's a two-way street.
Yeah, so I'll make sure those guys know too.
Yes.
I see them all the time, so I just sort of forget that.
Well, it's.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Dean.
Kim?
Do you know?
Okay, great.
Julia?
Did you want to say something under visitors to be heard?
Yes, I would.
Okay.
Should I come up?
Sure.
Hi, everybody. I'm Julia, I live in Westford. I came in today because I meant to come to the last meeting, but last week was a little bananas. And I saw this article in the Essex Reporter about the governor's response to funding and then comments from members of this board. And I have to say, it was a little upsetting to me because people in my town voted to become part of the district, which I frankly am seeing really great improvements in our education in Westford, so I'm happy with that. But we also did it because Mr. Kinney came to our school and gave a really good presentation about all of the benefits we would receive, including education cost being less. And when I read that article, what I saw was people on this board saying, we can't do that. So I feel a little bit deceived and a little frustrated. I gave up school choice for my children, as did many other voters in Westford. And I feel like the board is going into building a budget that potentially isn't going to honor that. So I thought it was important to come here tonight and talk to you all, person to person, and say, I expect a budget that honors my commitment to this unified district and honors your commitment to this unified district. So, thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that my comments that were probably in the article you're referencing, my concern or my frustration was that it seems that the governor and the work, the things that are happening in Montpelier are making it harder for us to deliver on that promise. So our intention is to continue to deliver, but I was, in that moment, I was frustrated that it feels like what the state, what's happening at the state level is making it harder for us to make that.
And for the person filming, is it better if I use the microphone or do you have this? Okay. So, and my intent is to call the governor's office and talk to them about their side of this thing too, because at the end of the day, everyone needs to commit to affordable education.
Absolutely, yeah.
But my recollection, I looked for your presentation online, my recollection was something like a half million dollars in savings over the course of two years. So if you can't level the fund, level fund the budget with an extra half a million dollars, I'm not clear how that doesn't happen.
So I, we shouldn't get into a long back and forth, but I think we should be clear that I believe we were gonna save a net of a million dollars over five years. We saved 300 and something last year. We hope to save money again this year based on staff reductions. At the same time, though, costs go up. So what we have to look at is what are we saving versus what we had been spending before? Doesn't mean the budget is gonna go down necessarily overall. Keely?
Can we also mention that healthcare recapture issue? Basically, some of us feel a little bit deceived as well, I guess.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry, I'm like.
Because we budgeted that because of our merger, we would not be spending as much on healthcare. And then the governor's office told us that we had to pay, what, $800,000?
Over two years.
Over two years, because they assumed that we had budgeted just as much money for healthcare. So some of our savings are being directed to paying money to the governor that we don't have in the budget because we already were trying to be responsible about budgeting, so.
I just feel like Westford is such a tiny part of this district that maybe it would be easy to say, it's not a big deal that the Westford people gave up something to make this all happen. But we also have enough voter participation that we can vote down a budget.
Yes.
With or without Essex. So, and I'm not saying that should be threatening, I'm just trying to be, you know, with all cards on the table.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think to Brendan's point earlier on was that to do a unification as well requires that we think strategically and to have mandates from outside along with additional pullbacks or clawbacks or however they want to characterize it. That's coming at us from ends that often find themselves in the way of strategic thinking around expanded opportunities, which I'm really glad to hear you're having a sense of those, some of those experiences as well. And I think that that's where we want to be really thoughtful about our budgeting process, to not find ourselves reactive to a single-year mandate that gets in the way of what we had expected to be able to deliver on with respect to expanded opportunities and equity for all kids.
Yeah, so I think the last thing I would say is that I would encourage you through visits to the website or coming to meetings or watching television film of the art meetings. The budget process is gonna start in January. And, you know, we'll try to communicate well about how that's going, but I would encourage you to keep track of that.
I know.
Thanks for, thanks for coming, Julia. Okay, consent agenda, does anything need to be pulled? Do I have a motion?
I will move that we approve the consent agenda with the school board meeting minutes of December 19th, 2017 and approval of warrants.
Well, there's some favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Thanks. So our, we have two presentations tonight, and actually this is timely to be on if you're interested in staying. The first is a report on equity, which we've been eager to have a discussion about. And the second will be, we talked about having periodic updates on the promise of merger and how things were going. And that's both on the financial side and on the student opportunity side. So I'll turn it over to Beth and Brian.
All right.
Coming around, there's the hard copies of what will be on the screen, so there's, they're correlated together, so. But all that material is what's on the screen as well. So I think just to start off with, to kind of level set expectations, we're not gonna satisfy, you know, everybody's interests. Our interests aren't satisfied right now. We're still in the process of, of beginning the, the full existence as a single merged district and as we started a few months ago with the board of getting to know ourselves. And so that is part of what we're gonna be going through today, tonight with you. And we're gonna be taking a look at some different slices and also giving you a first look at some of the enrollment. The October 1 numbers are now out and we just have also received our equalized pupils were frozen today. So, and the good news with our equalized pupils is it's up about 1.5%. So that will, that will help some of the budgeting process.
And we've also been, been meeting, Brian, Deb and I have been meeting individually with each principal to make sure that our staffing, what we have is correct and talking about programs and staffing, mainly staffing with them. But that's been the first initial meeting. So we've had a lot of leadership team topics around the budget, but we've been going out to the individual schools.
And that will continue tomorrow. We have a two and a half hour meeting with the entire leadership of the district to focus in on budgets and priorities and further investments needed for equity. So the first look at the total enrollment, we're at 36, 39 as of the October 1. This is the snapshot in time. It changes every day. So we all know that. For instance, we know that Hiawatha had, on October 1, had recorded an average daily membership of 47 for kindergarten. That's six higher now as of the other day. So that's the type of speed we see. And that six may not be six in, it may be nine out and, you know, 13 in. So it has quite a bit of churn to it, these numbers. But we use October 1, that's the statewide number, that's the number that any one would be able to go onto the AOE website and be able to track this data, be able to make sure it's crossed and footed out.
And it's broken down into the grade levels as the Agency of Education does, so that's how we report to them and that's why it looks like it does.
I guess I'm confused. Westford's reporting pre-K through K through 12 is 179, but if I'm not mistaken, the K through 8 population at Westford School is actually closer to 179. And I guess, I'm looking at the chart and it's suggesting that the total K through 12 population in Westford is at 179? That doesn't seem correct.
Westford School.
Yes, but I'm looking, why isn't it broken out as a K through 8 count versus, because the high school is showing a population of 1,200, give or take.
These are by school. It's seven through, seven and eight. So if you look at the grade 7 through 12 across for Westford, that's 7, 8. It's, that's the grade level spans at how the Agency of Education reports. So we have to report it that same way. So it's really 7, 8 of Westford.
I guess your designation is.
It's not for the town of Westford. It's for the school building of Westford. The AOE is, we stick by those.
Okay, so it's an actual count of 7 through 8.
Yeah, so there's not 37 students, 7 through 12, coming out of Westford.
But there's 37.
37 7th and 8th graders.
We can get that corrected at a later time?
No, no, it's how it's reported.
Okay.
It's by building, not town.
Yes, it's not clear the way it's presented. Can I explain English?
Well, but all the others are buildings. So if I can just clarify, it's not equalized people, it's. Bottoms in the seats, right?
It's ADM. So that's an average daily attendance of 40 days.
If you went around on October 1st and you counted the kids that were supposed to be there sick or otherwise. So it's not tuition kids then either, is it?
No.
Okay, so it's purely the people in the building on.
In the building, yep. And, and we're breaking it down, I guess part of it was that we're breaking it down by building in this case because we thought that that may be of interest to see by building. So we don't, you know, we don't, we don't always look at it in this way of slicing and dicing, but there are 179 bodies in the Westford School. And then there in Fleming, there's 227. So this gives you a sense of where, what is the population in your buildings.
I can edit it, 1,200 in the high school.
So what might be helpful, if this is gonna be shared, is to put in parentheses like Essex Elementary is only grades pre-K to 3, right? So.
K to 2.
K to 2.
That would actually be really.
So 1 through 6 is really only 1 and 2. So I think if you put it, if you put it by the schools then.
And what about CTE?
So Essex-Westford School District are these buildings?
Oh, I see, okay.
We, there is the sixth semester average, they're declining by approximately 11 students in the sixth semester average. We kept that to the side, looking, so EWSD will always be the nine buildings.
Yep.
And then you also have a responsibility for the Center for Technology. So this presentation is focused on the membership, the ratios, teachers, all within EWSD.
When students attend CTE and take classes at EHS, do they end up in the EHS number as well or just the CTE number?
Depending upon the purposes of the count, they'll be subtracted. But again, the, the population for CTE is not based upon a head count, it's based upon an average over six semesters. But what we can, what we receive as far as ADM does get modified by who is an Essex High School student who is attending the Center for Technology.
Does that mean it's the net effect of that student who's in CTE is that they are not in that EHS count?
They are in that EHS.
They are, they're in both counts. They are impacting the sixth semester.
If we had both counts, they'd be subtracted out.
Got it.
But for these purposes, they're Essex High School students, just like, like we can't count a Mount Mansfield student that is attending CTE but is inside this building for the entire day for CTE, but, so again, it's for the purposes of. The other part is that we're trying to get a really strong allegiance to the AOE reporting because I think it's been one of our, it's been one of our shortfalls is that we report a certain way and then we learn how the AOE looks at us.
Yes.
Sometimes in a Burlington Free Press story or in an article, because this is the information that if you go onto the website and you start to say what's happening at a certain district, this is some of the information you'll see. So we want to, we want to at least be able to convert back and forth between a way that AOE looks at it and the way that we look at it and have a pretty strong allegiance to what is public information. Of course, all our information is public, but it's not on the scale that AOE's would be a source to go to. So this is the number and kind of cutting right to it is, we've heard and it goes back some to that article that was, that was covered. The governor has talked, there's been a really good memo that came out from the Agency of Education, from Rebecca, that talked about using attrition and attrition is your friend and trying to work on these ratios. And if you recall, the, the number, and I believe you addressed this in your Vermont State Board Association, in one of your.
Meeting, Woduski.
Is that it's 5 to 1 is the ratio. So we are, again, what we've done is we've changed all our data collection and review to be in complete alignment with AOE. So even to those points where we're negotiating with them to improve their data, because there's some discrepancies in how they're working with it now. But we're in allegiance and when we put together our EWSD student-staff ratio, all students to the teachers they include, this eliminates your pre-K and your pre-K population, but it does include pre-K speech and language, it does include pre-K pairs and other pre-K support staff, which is one of the problems with the, the current data.
You don't count the students, but you do count the staff.
You don't count the certified teachers and you don't count the students, but you, we do employ specialists that work exclusively in pre-K.
We have to serve those.
And that will, that will get cleaned up, I think, over time. But we're at 5.4. So the first news is like, is this, is all that's being talked about right now, where is this focused? And I think later on in the meeting, we'll probably talk some about the report out of yesterday's educational summit. And where you walk away is that a lot of these numbers are happening in other parts of the state where there aren't, there are schools that have no second graders. You know, there are schools that have seven fifth graders. So those ratios become pretty hot, you know, pretty different than 5.4.
And I think it's, for those of us who weren't at that meeting, I think it's very useful to note, just as a comment, that the governor wants us or our schools around the state to get to a 5.0 ratio because Vermont is under that right now. Seeing us at 5.4 is a good sign for us.
But of course, you know, this is on a macro level. And what we take a look at is now when we bring that down, so now we're going back to those ADM numbers on a per-building basis and we're looking at staff on a per-building basis. There's of course district-wide, but, and now we have a misbehaving.
I just fixed it, but it's not refreshed on the thing. And I looked at it like, wipe that down.
So on a, on a building basis of staff there assigned to it, so that 5.4 was everything? 5.4 was all district-wide. This goes down now into a building-wide basis. And you can see we have a range of a low of 4.5 and a high of 6.4, 6.5. So that's our range right now. And this can be driven by a whole host of elements. And we're trying to now break down to see, you know, what exactly are those? What are the services? What are the outcomes? Because equity is all based upon access to outcome, not necessarily input, though that's more of an, of an equality kind of thing of input, but it's access to outcome. So now we're trying to drive down to like, where are these numbers delivering different outcomes?
Can you remind me how the AOE staff numbers reflect part-time staff or staff that are shared between a couple of buildings?
Great question. So this is all FTE. So if we have a person who is split between three schools, we would, we have FTE assignments, so that would be .33, .33, .33. So for instance, we have roughly 1,000 employees on a head count. We have 760 FTE because we have portions and parts. There are issues, again, going back to the data collection where the AOE currently wants it pretty precise on a certain population. And then after that, they have been okay with the idea of this just a head count, which becomes a real problem when we look at like a crossing guard. You know, we don't want to count, you know, an itinerant worker or interventionist at .8 and then count a crossing guard at 1. We want to represent that that's a two-hour-a-day job and we want to represent it that way. So we're working with them to.
I know there's a lot of staff shared between Summit and Fleming, but maybe Hiawatha has somebody part-time who isn't shared and so if they're just doing it on head count, like Hiawatha might end up with extra people just because.
The head count really happens more in that food service worker, in that safety and security and enterprise, and it's some of those that have some elimination to them that don't go up into the big high-stakes ratio. But it is still, it's still a problem because, you know, we're at this ratio right now is what is our total teacher-staff kind of building, staff-to-student ratio of 5. But you can imagine as we go through this and there's talks about outsourcing and that can eliminate head count but not necessarily expense, there's a lot that still is getting parsed with these ratios.
Kim? Have they given us a definition of who they are considering to be staff?
So this excludes maintenance, food service, what else? Maintenance, food service.
Security.
Yeah, transportation. So that has been excluded from these numbers.
And of course, the pre-K.
And the pre-K, yeah.
And pre-K.
Pre-K is, the teachers are not in this.
And that's across the state?
Yes.
That's across the state currently. And, and again, I think what's happened is that we have a.
Second time I sent it out.
We have a long tradition of this data collection. We have a new focus on how we're using it and it, and the data collection needs to improve now to, to really catch that. I mean, for instance, you know, there's just not the categories that reflect positions in every, every school district. So when we look at something like a communications coordinator that we have in our district, that isn't, that doesn't fit into their numerical sequence. So then there's process of Deb Anderson working with the department, say, where should I categorize this? And some of those, you know, end up making sense, but some of them you can tell are, are really just.
Looks like I have three people that support me.
Yeah, yes. Or coaches were being, they, they suggested adding coaches, like literacy coach and math coach and calling them curriculum coordinators. And it's like, well, that doesn't seem like that's the best way to approach it.
What is the ratio for Westford then?
6.0.
Oh, oh, just popped down there. I thought there was something weird going on with Fleming, like 5.7 to 6.0.
No.
Sorry.
I want to make a, I'm understanding, so coaches who might be a district-wide employee but are working in a building, how are they counted and where are they counted?
So they're counted in the 5.4, but now what we've done.
Overall, but not parsed by building? And that 5.4 is also capturing central office?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And is it just capturing licensed central office folks? Like, so.
It would include people all, all within your county and finance and your HR and everybody.
Does it count SU people?
That's what, that's what we mean by central office.
No, but I'm saying like, wasn't there a difference between how they did for SUs in school districts? Have they fixed that?
There was.
Doesn't matter to us.
Because we.
But it does matter on a statewide level. I think that'd be really important.
At the statewide level, it doesn't matter.
If you've not been through a study like we did where we have one school district and one SU, I would have had no idea that there was a different way of counting that. And so I don't know how they're doing it with SUs.
And, you know, we have a, we have a really large variety. We've, you know, we've done this, Act 46 has created a merger, but in the process, we've created. but in the process, we've created three or four new forms of governance. The MUDs and the other, so, some of those get to be pretty... I'll certainly ask how, how they're managing some of these that are Unified Unions, but also still inside a supervisory union and other elements. So, our numbers are, our numbers now reflect the way that they do it and have the comparable.
And, um, so, um, so like Lorna and, and Ben, or otherwise, are included in the 5.4?
Yep.
Not parsed by building. But, transportation, security, food service, and maintenance don't show up anywhere. They're not in the 5.4, so those are, okay.
And there were issues with that, because people said, well, we can just contract out, and then they wouldn't be, and that does, that's not right. Because you're going to save by not contracting out.
Exactly.
Okay.
Okay, I'm going to give the dog.
Can we move on?
Yeah.
All right. We should not be doing that statement.
So, the other way, the other element that we want to look at, so, again, looking, we still have the work to do to understand what the impact is to outcomes with our ratios. But, the other part that we want to look at is our class sizes, because there's also the element of what is, what are some of the outcomes driven by class sizes? So, this is using the October 1 data for enrollment, using the October 1 data for staff. And then taking a look at it, so that these are the averages across buildings, and then to the far right is the average across grade. So, for kindergarten in Essex Elementary, we're on an average of 14.8 per class, 19.7, 15.7, 20. And then that grand total, in a weighted average, gets us to 16.3. And we take a look at 16.3 up to our class size chart, and we see 16.3 is right at around the optimal. And then that works down, then we use these grade groupings, 1 through 3, 4 through 5, and 6 through 8, so that we match up to our class size. And if you remember, as we've, as we've talked some about, the work on the class size is that the state board maximum-minimums are on a K3 basis and a 4-8 basis. But, as we worked with all the principals within the district, there was a real strong belief that there's a big developmental difference between K and 1-3, and between 4-5 and 6-8. And really felt that the class size minimums, optimums, and maximums needed to reflect that developmental difference.
23 first graders in Westford, wow.
Yeah, that's right. We had two kindergarten teachers last year, definitely.
One number that isn't being reported, but just for your context, because it's something that we will be budgeting and talking about, is there's also the Act 166 population. So, that's all the three and four-year-olds that are in. So, we have our pre-K, 84 students that are in our pre-K. In addition to our 84 students, there's 166 in the Act 166 population.
166, yeah.
Do I have that number right?
It seems like you would have noticed that coincidence a little bit, Brian. The irony wouldn't have been lost then.
Questions?
46 in the merge.
77? Every act, it's all like, like a cryptogram. So, you know, the key here to walk away with is that we are at, at or above our, you know, a lot of our minimums and maximums. This grade 1 through 3, we don't look necessarily at just the grade 1 at 15.5, but we look at the 17.6, because it's across all of those. Yep?
Brian, besides potential, you know, educational outcomes, is there, is there any penalty for exceeding these maximums, or are these recommendations?
There, yeah.
There, that's part, that's part of, goes back to our ratio issue, is that these are guidance by the state board. So, you know, the issue has not been, the issue that people have been wondering about is not about what happens to those districts that are exceeding these, is that there are districts that have been well below the minimum for, and have been receiving waivers and so forth. You know, when, when you have stories of class sizes, like fifth grades that are seven people, or no second graders, there's another school district I heard that had no fifth graders. You really start to run into some, some serious problems. Because EQS, which is the other part, like, what are, what are some of those? Those do have teeth, because they go back to the educational quality standards that are going to be audited, and they go back to AOE and so forth. Those are some of the issues where, no matter what size the school is, you need a full-time principal. No matter what size the school is, you'd need a proportional amount of nursing, library, counseling. You know, there's all those requirements that just don't scale down to, you know, 12 students or 10 students.
Janitor. I mean, that, that is a little bit where I was going with the question of, not for our sake, but at a statewide level, the, not including janitorial staff in a building would begin to get at that sustainability of a building for 10 kids or something. But, you know, in our case, it wouldn't tip the scales, really. I just think it's, it's an interesting exclusion.
I think it's because of the contract issue.
That mic, Kim, is that going to, when you talk, I'm sorry, I'm hard of hearing. So, if you can put the mic closer to you.
Get it away from Liz.
I can hear Liz.
I know. Sorry.
So, the, the, yep, the next number that we're looking at, so what we've done for you is, this is a roll forward, so we took, if we take the October 1 numbers and we roll those forward into next year, and we bring in the same number of kindergarteners, what does our class sizes then look like? And, um, going back to Beth's comments, how we've sat down now and going through and sitting down with every principal, and really dissecting, making sure we're doing some quality assurance on our database and reporting out, we still have EMS to sit down with. We sit down with Kevin later on this week. So, there's some numbers that look like anomalies to us, and we're just wondering whether that's configuration or grade switching, because, you know, obviously, the 19.4. And it's just, in the midst of all the work that we've done, we have converted to a brand-new HR system on July 1, which, you know, honestly, is probably a great long-term benefit. It's a significant struggle for a first year of merging, because it, you go into a new database and you kind of cut off some of your past experience.
And that's something, definitely, when we go to Kevin, we'll talk about that, grade 6 and grade 7. It's, um, seems strange to us, but we, that, those are the questions. This is why we're doing this, and that's why we're sitting down with the principals and having the conversations, and having conversations with Marcy, too, about those numbers. In K1, we were thinking outside the box of some possibilities and things we could do, so... And that continues to happen.
And the leadership team has, has, I think, really been attracted to the conversation we had at the last board meeting, and that is the voluntary school choice potential. And hearing from Mount Mansfield Unified Union, who has one, so, that...
We have three different policies that I gathered from yesterday's work.
Great. Yeah. But, I think the takeaway here is that, as we go into budgeting, we're seeing that our minimum-maximums and optimums, like, we're, we're within range. There, there isn't some real big place that we're going to have a huge change. I think what we've got is, by building basis, we've got a couple of pockets that we may need to look at handling inside and outside the box.
Can I ask a question about the K number? I know with 166, are we better able to anticipate that number? Did we plug the same numbers, or is it informed by either 166 enrollment or demographic projection?
It's, it's informed. I think what we're now getting is a, is a much better, clearer picture of what our kindergartens are going to look like, though we're, still don't have enough longitudinal kind of time in it. Like, we've, we've always been able to see that we get our preschool, and we get some identified child, and then we get sort of this other. And now we're trying to figure out whether the other is going to decline, because now we're identifying them in the 166 population. What we just don't have a good view on is the 166 population, because that's the most transient grouping, because they, they're not connected to a school community yet. So, we're seeing that population just have, one, it's outpaced our projections so far the last two years significantly. And, three, is we're seeing, inside of it, we're seeing a lot of change. There's just, so, it's a really, it's a time where people are, are able to move around and adjust quicker.
And an ideal ask to that question is, the 84 of our preschoolers for whom we are providing SLP or other services that we're counting our staff, but not our students, is the ask at the state level that the numbers of students would include just those whom we're servicing, or those within our entire 166 population? Just the kids in our building? Because you're saying we have to count the staff, but we don't get to count the kids?
Not the pre-K.
Not in the ratios, not in the ratios.
Right, so, so that's, no, I know we get them for ADM, and that's...
I think if we, if we take, if we take the pre-K population out, that we're responding, that we're, that we're educating, then I think the logic is, is that we would remove all the staff dedicated to pre-K. So, we either, we're either all in or all out. What they've done right now is they've taken the population out, they've taken the teacher out, but I think it's just that no one's kind of caught up, is that you have dedicated speech and language.
Which we always have had, I mean, that's always been that way.
That's your number one, that's going to be your number one.
That's the triple E.
Triple E kind of rule.
Yeah, we have to count those.
So, do we prefer to count the kids, or do we want to? Because we have some of those educators serving students that are in private preschools?
Yep.
So, then we really want to count the kids versus losing the, either way, one way or the other. They need to align it either, losing...
They need to align it.
We can't be, got it?
Okay.
Thank you.
Let's keep going.
So, the other part that we've been slicing, so we're continuing to work on this with the, at the educational leaders, team members to, to say, this is who we are, what's the outcomes that we're seeing, and then that's going to start to really gravitate up, whether we're seeing some equity issues. And what we're, what we're seeing is that we have a real variety of delivery systems. You know, either, either by building or by former legacy district, that there were different structures that were built for delivery, and those structures may or may not have differences in the staff, staffing level. Things like, uh, structures for intervention, structures for pairs used, structures all, all the way across the board. Even how we're using staff time, and whether we're trying to create structures for teaming and for PLCs, which then may create things like lunchroom or recess pairs. You know, some of those are structures that are still kind of building by building, and we want, we need to figure out what that outcome impact is. The other part that we're looking at is, like, where are, where are some of our offerings? So, this is a look at, um, the athletics. It's really broken down. The feeling was, when we were putting together this data, was to look at the three schools that were similar, the three middle schools. With, the, the other schools don't really, they don't live in this world of athletics and co-curriculars. Not yet, we'll, we'll eventually get there, I'm sure. But, we didn't, we had originally the EHS data, and I think the EHS data is informative, where you can sort of see, like, where don't we have a feeder system? Or where do we have something? Where are we building expectations during middle school that we're not answering those expectations later in the high school level? But, for our purposes, we wanted to see, I think I, what I walked away with from the conversation before was, the board was learning from the community where one school had something and another school didn't. This is not an equity issue. This is, this is a difference, you know, it's sort of an analysis of differences, an analysis of similarities, because student populations can dictate some of this stuff. And the co, I'm handing out now, the co-curricular activities, the clubs are listed there. It's just one page. Those are a bit longer and became really problematic to try to get onto a slide. A key point to recognize, as that's going around, is that a co-curricular is not the same from one to another. So, there are some sort of building or former legacy district kind of standards, where we have certain things that have a, sort of an investment or a larger cost. And then there are some in the, in the town that are run on interests or availability of teachers in a more, almost situational basis. So, they may come and go based upon even time of year, or come and go from one year to another, where Albert D. Lawton and Westford may have more of a stability of that these are the ones that we're offering. Does that make sense, some? And you can see a little bit by the names that there, there is not a standard across the board that we have Dungeons and Dragons, or...
Yeah.
I thought Westford had a guitar club. I thought Westford had a guitar club. At least when I sat there, they had a guitar club.
They had photography. They did.
Those things are showing up here.
Well, and this is, this is based on a database of, this does not include anything that's being operated by volunteers. This is people that are receiving stipends and contracts, so... There could be, yeah, there could be things that are done by volunteers that expand well beyond this.
Or offered, like, through a rec club, that's not part of the count as well.
Right.
Kim? Is Westford baseball out, then? That's no longer being offered?
We haven't had baseball for quite a while.
No, is it three, four years it's been gone?
I think so.
Okay.
Kim? I was just wondering if for all of these under EMS, those are stipend positions?
They are, but they work very differently from, from how maybe ADL was represented and how Westford's represented, that those might be...
Hourly.
Yeah, they're like a per-session rate of like $10. So, they're a nominal amount of money that may assist somebody in kind of putting together materials or something. Where other ones are more of a material amount of money, and they're, might come with a job description. There's an expectation that if that person were to leave, we would hire or reassign somebody for that coaching position or that club advisor, where in some of the EMS, if something came up, that club may just stop operating.
And this is new data that we just, that Brian and I just started to look at, so it caused us to have a lot of questions, but it's in that beginning look of what's happening.
Brendan, at 9:00, we had 9:00.
We may have already talked about this at a previous meeting, but isn't it the case that there was one or more Westford students who, um, because the sport wasn't offered at the school, have come over to EMS or ADL to participate?
Yes.
And is that a case-by-case situation? Or have we established policy or protocol around that sort of ability to? If, if there's not enough students, a critical mass, to have a cross-country team, for example, at Westford, is the, is it a policy that that student is avail, has the option of trying out for the team?
It, it is a, it's a brand-new phenomenon.
Okay.
As far as I know, that it occurred this year with a, with a desire that some students wanted an opportunity, that opportunity wasn't going to be able to be available to them. We worked out transportation, I think it ended up, at least one student took that opportunity. So, you know, now what we do is evaluate, how did that work, and what's it like? And what does that mean if there are cuts, and how does that operate? I mean, most of these, like, that we're looking for don't really have that. It's really a participation basis.
Right.
So, I think the transportation is par transportation.
Well, we had worked out for a while that the two buses were meeting one another at the top of Chapin.
Yeah.
Kelly?
I just wanted to clarify about the disparity of what the stipends meant in the co-curricular section. I just wanted to clarify about the disparity of what the stipends meant in the co-curricular section. There isn't a disparity about what they mean in the athletics section, right?
Right. Kim? I know that EMS has band, chorus, orchestra and theater or drama or something, cause they're doing a play right now. But those appear to be missing, they're pretty robust.
They're not volunteer?
No, band, chorus, orchestra.
Are they part of the music program? That's what I, that's one of the questions that I-
No, it's after school for sure. Because, um, my mentee participates in-
Yep.
All of that and they're definitely after-school programs?
I think what we have to look at is the ins, is the instructor's contract and how that's working within the instruction. Unless there's somebody separate from instruction that's doing all that, I thought they were-
So-
Teachers.
So, in the case of like ADL, the band is not being instructed by the band club or whatever, is not the guy or woman who teaches music or band during the day?
Those are the questions we have.
Yeah, so I think that-
It's how they're being compensated, are they being compensated under an extracurricular contract? Or are they being compensated as part of their teaching contract?
And we guess to, um-
And it sounds like they need to ask much more.
Right, and to, but to Brian's point about sort of what outcomes and opportunities are being available, how they're being compensated or stipended or not, um, or volunteer or not, might be less important than whether or not those things exist. And so, I think knowing full well that in some of these cases, and I, I'm sure I don't know everything, I just happen to know that those four things exist pretty robustly um, at EMS and I don't, at, as I think about it when we sit here, I'm not sure that I care as much about how that's stipended until we get to the budget and, you know, it's served by something, but it seems as though even these ones and twos are different from column to column, so we would wanna make sure we're representing the opportunities that are available to kids. Almost as importantly, particularly since we're recognizing that these, these FTE numbers are actually somewhat meaningless because of the way they're stipended. A little bit, right?
Right, and those are just counts.
No, I'm sorry, uh, yeah, absolutely, that there's a body doing it, serving the purpose for that.
It's not an FTE.
Yeah.
Okay, I got a couple of questions, Brian. Um, Prudential Committee, quite a few years ago, we had a very controversial issue with extracurriculars and athletic stipends. Because in past years, they were, uh, based upon the teacher's base amount of earnings. So, that as the teachers got three percent per year, the stipends went way, way out of proportion at ADL versus at the high school, and I was on that committee that studied it. And I'm just curious how that works for EMS versus ADL because it may look like it's not a big deal, but if this is going to the teacher's retirement of how they're doing this, we gotta make sure we have a very clear policy across the board for Westford, I think.
Contract, right?
It, it's a contract issue, so it is more important than what it looks like on paper. And it does make a difference, volunteerism, whether, um, it's, you know, cause I can see one school saying, well, why aren't I getting a stipend or why can't we do volunteerism here? The other question I have, because music and all of that are feeder, you need feeder programs. I know we did some cuts in the junction a few years ago, we started whittling down where band was being, uh, given in courses and, uh, some of that before and after school. So, I would also, I know it's a lot, but I would also like to see how Westford, uh, the junction and the town, how the feeder things play into that because it not only feeds into middle school, it's gonna have an impact on your high school.
Well, there's a whole lot that's missing here.
Right, right.
We could talk about that, we could talk about language, we could talk about all kinds of things, that's not what's presented here. There's much more to the picture. I don't wanna spend too much time on this, cause I'm not sure how meaningful it is at this point. Keely?
Um, I would suggest that ha, to have a focus on students. Um, one piece of data that might be more important than everything else is how many students are participating? Because, um, if you have a program where only one student at Westford can participate in any sort of track and field sport, but like a hundred and fifty students participate in track and field at EMS or something, then that's different from saying that one person is helping out in both places. And it would also help us to understand these issues like it, if the band is like in one kind of contract here and one kind there, but fifty kids participate in each place, then we can sort out the monetary stuff later, perhaps by looking at what the per capita cost is in each place to offer it, but, um, starting with how many students are participating could be really helpful.
Yeah.
That's a great suggestion, Keely.
May allow for the opportunity to look at it in those grades, Marla, that you're talking about? Like even though Fleming and Founders are configured differently, even if we were to look in fourth and fifth grade, find a common, um, grade grouping that would allow Fleming, um, FMS and Westford, if there are kids participating in some version of the music program, we would be able to capture that.
Yep.
If we were doing students versus whether or not it's part of their school day. I think at Founders anyway, kids come in early for their music, um, their extended music programs, like their chorus and-
Lessons.
Band or something, not lessons or during the day typically, but they come in early for-
Well, I, I guess if I could just extend this, I think it, I think there's a, there's a level, um, there's a level above this detail of these individual listings of opportunities that, that if we could get up into a higher kind of theming and we make sure that there are opportunities within those themes and that buildings and populations and teachers can exercise their interests and the passion that fall into those, but we just always make sure that, that, that kind of broad brush of opportunity is available where it may be artistic expression, it may be environmental work, it may be volunteerism, and we just, and we say that these are the things that we want because they tie into our outcomes later in high school and so forth, so we want these to be our feeder system all the way through. And we get out of like, um, talking about chess clubs and we, and we get more into that, like, what is that theme of opportunities? We wanna make sure is a cross-section.
I just wanna, um, I just wanna sort of, uh, reinforce what you just said because, you know, I think for, this data has certainly helped satisfy the curiosity of the board. I don't want this to necessarily be an invitation for us to dig even deeper as a board. I'm not sure how, to, to Mar, to Martha's point earlier, I'm not sure, um, that, I, the board needs to keep in mind sort of what its role should be in terms of getting deep, deep, deep into this data. Um, and I think if we're thinking about the larger themes of outcomes and I think those, and, and, and budget responsibilities, but I think that we really should be very careful about where we go with the, as a board with this information.
And that's on us as well.
Right, and frankly, I'm much more interested in looking at the curricular, and, and this is important, but I'm much more interested in looking at the curricular, um, equity.
Yep.
What, what do students have?
And we are gathering that right now, um, and we'll discuss it at our leadership team, but we put out, um, it's like a Google form that they're filling out, figuring out minutes and art and their, that kind of thing, so we're gathering that from principals.
Okay, it's good to hear.
Equity.
Kim? I think that we will definitely wanna be looking at categories, but I think part of it is getting the data to be able to theme and I, I think that having this conversation was important because the way we can look at the data, I think the notion that it might be by participation or right now, what we were able to identify from looking at this is the places where it's not representing what's actually happening in the buildings. And I know that you guys will continue to explore that. Um, and just like we did in October with our meetings, we had the data and then we were able to theme and so this is a step one and good to have had the conversation to know where some of the holes are or some of the information isn't reflecting what's actually happening, you know, for kids right now.
Or it, it may, and our information doesn't know what's happening. Like, this may, this may be an exact reflection of what's happening, but we're not informed of how that teacher's assignment is structured or how other, you know, we're looking at one lens and trying to see it all, but it may not be the whole story.
Right, and finding inconsistencies, like Marla was talking about and how contracts are structured or to, to Keely's point where we have concentrations and if that's being handled by volunteers one place and, uh, as a budgetary item someplace else. I do recall, I believe, from the contract process that there's nothing within our master agreement that speaks to, you know, co-curricular assignments underneath the master agreement. Not that I am recalling.
Well, Deb's the one who's gonna understand how that works. So, I don't want us to get too poked down tonight, this is a first look and clearly needs more time. Um, I think the board has raised some good points that, um, Brian and Beth can think about. Is there any last minute urgent?
Thank you. This is a great start, it helps put things into perspective if I get asked questions about a district that I should know about, you know? So, I just thank you for the start of this process.
I, I wanna echo that, and I also just wanna, you know, point out that this number is going to be a hot topic this year.
Yes.
So, how we're able to talk about the five point, how we're able as a board to talk about that five point four uh, student-staff ratio, I think is gonna be more important than we understand at this particular moment.
Exactly. Okay. Are we ready to move to the second presentation? Which is the promise of merger.
Yes, so, I think we, we were queuing this up, um, as more as a conversation.
Oh, good.
Because we're, I mean, I think we're still at a point-
Honestly, was trying to wrap up last year and go this year that the, the, the slides weren't coming to us naturally.
Good move, good way to put it.
Nothing was coming to us naturally. Um, I, I think it was actually comes off of a statement that I heard yesterday and that is, is that, um, it was a superintendent that talked about one of the benefits from merger was, um, was that kind of common vision, common thought. And what the efficiencies are that get impacted by that common thought, and I would say we're hitting that on a daily basis in space. Like you can tell, like EWSD is now becoming what everyone's common frame is. It, we're, we're surely, o- over time, we're kind of losing that sense of that legacy identity and now creating more of that comment and it's something like, you know, the K-five principals were the ones that started the chart and saying, we, we need to know, like, what are you doing for minutes and what are you doing for minutes and how are you doing that and what do you? So, we're all in a process of, like, it's, it was day one on July first. I know that you guys were well-elected, you guys met, it was day one on July first because that became our job to be EWSD on July one. Before, it was the part that we were trying to fit in above the day job was to be that, so. I, I think it's been, that's the efficiencies I see, is that-
Yeah, and I, and I really see the student opportunities as we move into where our vision is and what our focus, the leadership team, our, our conversations have really been about what are we focusing on as a district? Not individualized schools, but where do we need to make sure that all of our students are successful and what do we need to do? Where's that work that we need to do with our, um, staff? So, and ourselves, so it's, you know, we've, we've talked a lot about equity and we're reading that book, Building Equity, which is getting that common language for those student opportunities and what does that look like and are we reaching all students? So, our conversations have been really deep and it's not just like we can pull out these student opportunity, it's just, um, it's constantly, we're talking about those, the student opportunities and efficiencies within the district. Um, tomorrow we have a, I think it's a really, um, big leadership team meeting that will, um, will come out of there with our focus for next year and how that impacts the budget. Um, it's the, we know why we need to do something differently, we don't know the how or the what that is yet. We're narrowing down, um, and tomorrow we'll walk away with that and it's difficult because that vision isn't there yet, although we all kind of know what that might look like and we have a lot of data and we'll be using tomorrow, we'll think about, um, the DMG report, the District Management Group report from Students Services and we'll be, we'll be bringing in the Voices for Education thinking around that and what they were saying about student engagement and schools need to look different, so all of that data, and it's all actually budget talks, but we haven't been, um, you know, focusing on the student opportunities, but we are. It's just not worth saying, this is, you know, it's, it's difficult, it's a lot of work. As Marla just whispered to me a little bit ago. But, yeah.
So, I think in the, in the student opportunity side, um, there is a process of just naturally, we're, we're four months into this school year, so we've been seeing some low-hanging fruit along the way. Um, in the efficiency side, we've been seeing just a different, I mean, I, I would say that even going into this budget, people are thinking, already coming in and saying, I know the economic outlook, I know what's expected as part of honoring our commitment to merger with reducing our, the, the burden on, uh, the taxpayers and keeping a quality educational program. And we're seeing, like, our, we've been really insistent to be at a district-wide basis. Like, to, to take that team and not have them be a team of building leaders, but have them be a district-wide leadership team. And to be looking at things in a district-wide basis. Uh, and it's, you know, it's created some anxiety, people have a, a long record of saying, okay, give me a spreadsheet, let me work inside that spreadsheet now and I will advocate for my building. That, it's not gonna, it's not gonna get us to the, to the world of difference that we need to be. So, uh, it will be exciting to go into tomorrow and, and work on it. As far as cost-wise and efficiencies, we're seeing a number of them, I mean, we'll see them going in. Um, as we go through seven audits and we know that each one of those audits is coming at a, at a five-figure cost. Next year, when we have two audits, you know, we, we know that we'll save money that way. We don't have to just audit a, um, a CTE and, and into, um, and we'll even be able to potentially combine some of that work, so we know that those are efficiencies that we'll be seeing throughout the year.
Brendan?
Brian, one of the most, um, helpful things, and I think, it's Julia?
Julia?
Julia.
Julia, um, you know, mentioned it tonight, is that last year when we built the first budget for EWSD, we were able, Deek was able to keep track of, um, opportunities for efficiencies and how much that really translated to in terms of dollar savings. And I'm wondering if you're, before we forget that, if we're able to continue to do some kind of a tracking in that way? Because I think that for, for Julia and for many other members of the community, sort of keeping tabs on those savings, um, uh, you mentioned audit and I know there are other things being considered, I think that will be really helpful. And, and eventually, it, you know, it won't be as big of a, of a pressure point, but I do think that that's still an expectation of the community, that we keep track of those savings?
Yep.
And keep track, track of those dollars?
You know, we've had some movement within the system, we had a support staff leave, um, the district office and move into a school. We didn't replace that support staff, we figured out among the support staff, um, different job responsibilities and roles and responsibilities, so every time something that like that comes up, we have to bring it to the table and is this a position that needs to be replaced or how can we do it without doing that? So, it's, you know, and that's always, we're always having those conversations.
And I think we'll- We'll definitely keep track of all the, the personnel, I mean, the, the numbers we're talking about as far as savings that people expect and I think with the- And I think with the whole idea of merging an SD and an SU and getting those efficiencies, it's really going to be on people. And that's going to be pretty easy for us to track and to annualize over time and be able to see what that thing is. And, and in some ways it's going to be lowering our increases, right? We're, I mean, we also are working on a sense that the tax rate is going to be increasing by two cents automatically because of the support that we got from Montpelier was 10, 8, 6, 4. So we know like every year we go and we know the taxes, the, the rate goes up two cents just by losing some of that support. So, but looking at that and then keeping an anecdotal list of, oh, we've been able to do this purchasing now across the board, we've been able to do this. But if we keep track of those personnel, I think that's going to deliver on the promise. You know, and I think we should be looking at it, not that we saved $372,000 last year, but if we don't replace those people, we should be recognizing that that's, you know, the $740,000 savings. I mean, that's the real trajectory savings.
Right. But at least if not accumulating it, you certainly should still say in year two, we've still saved the 300 whatever and now we're going to save an additional. And I think a lot of it is the people, we did quantify some of the, you know, not having to buy licenses in the same way and, and, you know, purchasing things differently that save money. So the, to the degree we can keep track of that, I think as Brendan said, it's incredibly helpful. Patrick.
That was actually something that I had requested be done or at least be kept track of, I think back in May and then again in August. So, I mean, I don't want to stress it too much, but trying to bring it up again, I mean, I expect that these numbers are already being kept track of, aren't they?
Yeah, I mean, we're just not.
Your first six months of operation, we're not, I mean, besides the 370,000, we have that unfilled position, we have an unfilled position in finance, that, that position was budgeted but was never filled. So we have a series of those that we're keeping track of. We just haven't seen a lot of the operational savings because, you know, what, we're just not at that time where we see them. We see those in our future.
Right. And we do need to remember that this was a five year promise and the biggest savings were after three years, which will now probably go to fours. That's part of that had to do with transportation reimbursement. And because we didn't transport it as a junction this year, we won't be getting that reimbursement out.
Just a couple of comments. At one of the meetings that we had, it's been about two or three meetings back, we talked about transportation, purchasing buses, replacement buses. So one part of this equation is increased costs and some of those costs were pretty significant. I know that what we're talking about thus far have been attrition in order to minimize the impact on the organization. I think one of the things I would like to see in terms of community feedback is when we get to a point where there can be some major savings with reorganization, doing things considerably different. And I don't know if DMG has all of those types of answers or not, but one of the things I've tried to talk about on at least three occasions, two or three occasions, has been, do the directors have the necessary leadership skills to evaluate people and to bring forth proposals in a timely manner? And the second thing, does, do the directors need specific measurement tools in order to assist in that effort? And I'm looking for those kinds of costs in any budget proposal because they have to be upfront type of, of supports that the leadership team needs in order to carry for the, the next years coming.
So you mentioned sort of like the, the professional development costs or outside assistance costs to create a better lens and more resources tool, tool belt for the directors.
Right. A good example of that is the way IT does their help desk, but there may be other ways and other tools for other directors. I just don't know. It's a, it's a matter of looking ahead, but planning for the, the strategic supports that they need.
Yep. And that might dovetail into our work that still is looking to get started with a company called Inlet, who does a lot of work in the school business, but looks at custodians per square foot and looks at, you know, technicians per computer and some of those ratios we found have been very helpful, sometimes not actually to advocate reduction, but sometimes to advocate increases.
I, I think one of the, one of the strategic things that I had learned from Vince was the Chrome directional change for the high school. That is a real significant change in terms of IT support required and still providing superior student, a, a tool for students to use on a regular basis all the time.
Yeah.
So it's a, it's a different philosophy about how instead of loading all these computers with specific applications, whatever computer you pick up, your applications are there. It's, it's a real change, a major change in the IT direction that's significantly more cost effective. So looking at those and applications and efficiencies across the entire organization, I think is important to do.
Okay. Brendan.
So I love the frame of the promise. I wonder if Beth and Brian can talk a little bit about first, you know, first six months in, what are some of the real day to day challenges, the things that are more challenging or are challenging you the most with regard to the merger? Where are those sort of pain points?
Hmm. I might talk about those last time.
Maybe just a sampling would be good.
I think, I think the budget process has been challenging in working with the leadership team and the expectations from two different systems and what they were used to. And Brian spoke to that before and bringing them to the district level to think about what's our large focus and having them kind of step up out of their building for that. That's a challenge and we knew it was going to be. We had, maybe not as much as we thought, but we certainly talked about it ahead of time of what that would be. And I also think the challenge is what is, and we're using the DMG group again in the second cohort to really think about what's the right size for our district. I think that that's a challenge and I think about that on like a daily basis. I'm wondering that like at administration compared to the amount of students.
I think, you know, I, I just sort of mentioned, I think the, the, the perspective that I've come to appreciate is that regardless of the work and the talk and the meetings and everything that talked about the EWSD and the lead up to July 1, is that there was no one working in EWSD until July 1.
Right.
No one. It had zero employees. We were hired, we were coming on board, but zero employees. So every bit of work was done in addition to running school. And it was the same number of students and it was the same, it was a district that, that was really hungry for work to, to set up. So I'm appreciating building this budget is that I feel like I'm creating year zero. Like last year, all the budget work that you went through was a, was a super collider collision of columns that some of them kind of lined up and some didn't and there was this crosswalk and then you had a CFO that left, you know, nearly this time, exact time last year. And then the pickup of that, it's, that, that is a, it's a real challenge. And I, you know, I have, I, I hopefully exceed, you know, hopefully I have expectations of our performance and of my performance that well exceed yours. So it's hard. It's hard to, to be in a district that we are, we're collecting this data, you know, some of this data that we're collecting about groups and so forth. You know, not only are this is the first time we're putting it together, it's the first time it's ever been available because we started the budget process and actually put them all into one database for the, like last year, there may have been things that looked like they were all in one database, but they weren't. So, you know, to compare, contrast and question is, always feels a little bit like we didn't know what we didn't know and then as we start to look at it, we, we lead the question parade. So that's the, I think that's the challenge right now.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Thanks.
Thanks for the question, Brendan. Anything else on the promise of merger?
Just that you already said it, but the communication to the community of this whole process is going to be really, really important, but complexities, if they're explained well, I think could really benefit us. Got to keep that in mind.
Thanks Liz, very true. All right, let's move on to board business and our task team updates. Let's start with communications.
We don't really have anything to report except of one follow through on the Nellie May work, which is that Beth and Ben and I had a phone call with Nellie May and Great Schools Partnership and Everyday Democracy, no, Everyday Democracy was not on that line. And we, we spent about an hour and a half on the phone giving an evaluation of the pro, of the process to date and that report will be available to all of you in January. And another, just one question. Did we pick a day for the student, for the leadership meeting? Did you pick a day?
Yes, but I wanted to run it by the leadership team tomorrow.
Okay, okay.
It's the fourth Wednesday.
Okay, thank you.
In January, but I do want to.
Okay. Any questions on communications testing? I, student representation, which one of you is going to do this? Liz, you took the notes, do you want to?
Sure. I can, I can do it. We, so we met with the students, we have, we all divided up our work where we are. What we wanted to bring to the board is that we want to meet with the students one more time and we want, we're hoping that on the second regular board meeting in January, we'll be able to bring a proposal to the table that has been vetted with the students and, and ourselves about what we are hoping for with the board. We've had some great energy around it. There's been a lot of research around what happens in other districts that's guiding the way we're thinking about doing this work and so we're really excited about that. What else did we want to report for?
I think we wanted to do the specific questions that the board's going to have to decide.
Right, so the board is going to have to decide how many students we want represent as student reps on the board. We're finding a lot of communities have two students and, and for a lot of reasons, but so one thing we'll need to decide is how many students on the board. Another big decision is how that student will be chosen and elected and we really are looking to communicate with the students about what their hopes are around how that, there's different models in the state around how school districts get that representation. Some are elected through the student body, some are appointed through a principal and a, a teacher and a committee that appoints and so we want to make sure we get that piece right. We wanted to ask the board if there was anything else that you needed in order to inform your decision and vote yea or nay on whether we want this representation. So I guess I'll pause for a minute to see what it is you all.
Um, I guess my question is what type of participation are we looking at? Whether it be inadvisable or actually have voting rights or, I mean, that's what need to understand. I mean, I'm looking at this as whether it's participation more of advisory role.
So we, yeah, we, they're not able to be voting unless they, they would not be elected by the constituents. And even if they were 18, they wouldn't have gone through that process. So most of the models we had seen are junior and senior students so that there's a learning curve as we've all learned in our experiences in board work, that first year can be a little deer in the headlights. So it seems like a good model. It's a model used at the state board level as well. And as we were speaking with the students in the very beginning, I think there was a little pause and concern that they wouldn't really have a role or responsibility or power without voting rights. And the conversation that we were able to have with them is that rarely can I think of literally in all my years of board service, an occasion where we were a split vote, a directly split vote where a single vote would have made the difference. The conversations we have generally may not bring us to unanimity, but they often bring us to some general consensus well informed by the conversation. They were well, they were satisfied in understanding that and also understanding the law would prohibit them from voting. They don't attend executive sessions, but otherwise they're fully participating board members. In some boards, they have like a mentor that's a, an adult board member that may sit next to them. In some situations, they're reviewing the agenda with the principal ahead. Some cases they're getting community service credit for it where that's a requirement of their graduation. In some cases, they are kind of screened through the student council or student body and then interviewed by a committee that might include the principal and a board chair and, and a teacher or something to that effect. And another community in Rutland where they're, they're voted by, it's a race that's voted by the full student body. So there's a range of options there and I think in all cases for all adults, board members, superintendents, whom we had spoken to, the three of us, because we reached out pretty broadly, some, a great opportunity on Monday at our breaks when we were in the, the session to be able to talk to people. But in all cases, that student participation on the board was viewed to be incredibly valuable. In some cases, they are very specifically charged with making sure they're reaching out to building levels other than the high school to provide voice on student matters ranging outside of the high school community. And I think given what we learned from our October thing, that might be something we'd want to have be part of their charge and help, help them figure out how best to do that so it's not terribly onerous. In some cases, they bring forward periodically student reports. I know they did at the state board meeting that we were at and it was really very interesting. It happened to in that case be the college application process, which many people sitting around the table, unless you have a kid going through it, would not have necessarily been familiar with. So it might be something that aligns well with where we are in our work plan for the year and periodically we ask them to dive a little deeper from a student's perspective. I think those are things that we can figure out how to make it most valuable to all of us as well as to the students. And I think part of what would be helpful is when we figure out some of the logistics about how many and how they get elected or, or appointed to the board. Beyond that, working with them to think about how to create a meaningful experience for both parties and support them in that. Did I miss stuff? I'm sure I did.
Well, I think the one thing that I, I would have, the two superintendents I spoke with couldn't say enough about how valuable student voice is at the table, but on the other side, how valuable it is for students to be involved in civic engagement and to be able to see civil discourse between adults who may disagree. And in particularly the superintendent from Rutland who has been, they've been doing this longest since 2000. She talked about how many of the former reps had gone on to be diplomats, working foreign service, become attorneys. One is the city attorney in Rutland now, so it was interesting. One is the city attorney in Rutland now. So, um, it was interesting. Brendan.
Yeah, I guess one of the thing, one of the things that, um, came to mind as I thought about this idea, uh, is, and it, and it's something that actually applies, I, I think that as a board, we need to think more about is the onboard, the onboarding of a student, uh, or student representatives. I think it, we might need to think really hard about making sure that they have enough information to give them some kind of a grounding in what they're walking into. Because I think, you know, as we know as board members, it can be really challenging. But to not have any basis or understanding at all, um, would be maybe even more challenging for a student. So I, I would suggest that the onboarding of a student might be more intensive or be different, presented differently than it would be for a new board member. But I think that could be a key piece of the, of the process.
Some kind of orientation.
Yeah.
The other thing that, um, the two superintendents I spoke, we've talked about is that in one case, the superintendent, in another case, the principal met with the students to go through the agenda ahead of each meeting. So they could ask questions and, and there could be some review of what the student should expect or be thinking about or what kind of contribution they might make.
In other instances, there's a board member who's assigned to that student who really works one-on-one, Quaven's sitting next to them at the board table. If there's a question, you know, that, that person is responsible for making sure the student is, is up to speed on all of that.
So a couple of questions ranging from the pragmatic, like, what degree of commitment are the students expected to have? Like, I can't find a babysitter. So, most teenagers seem to be occupied during this time and like, will we acknowledge that they miss a certain percentage of the meetings? Or will we offer a stipend in order to make it easier for them to attend? To the more philosophical questions, like, drawing on what Brendan said, like, I can't imagine being a high school student and actually understanding what you're walking into before attending a board meeting. We don't have a lot of students at the board meetings. Like, for me, I sat through dozens of hours of red study meetings to get an idea of like, okay, this is interesting enough to run. So, kind of making sure that the people who are expressing interest would still be interested after budget season, for instance.
It's a good point. And even the students who have joined us today were like, are all these meetings this long? So you're right. It's really important that the, that these, and, and there's been some comment in our research about finding the right person to fit in at this table. And there have been problems with somebody, so, some students who are too quiet or too introverted and don't bring voice to the table. And so finding the right person is again, something that, that we'll have to figure out how to do that. It's not for everyone.
And then my last philosophical question is, like, I know this is totally out there, but to me, a voice that I often wish was participating in this conversation was teachers. And if we're including people who can't technically be on the board because of the law, like, maybe we could also include like a representative from the teachers' union to chat about things or somebody from in one of the buildings. I mean, I know it's totally out there and crazy, but I would love to hear what an actual teacher thinks a lot of the time.
Beth, do you want to comment on that?
I've never heard of a teacher being present like that and participate like a student would at a board meeting. I think that at times, it wouldn't be a great thing to happen. Um, I think that, um, as board members, you're at a 30-foot level. And I think that we try to, we're on the ground and be able to bring information to you. So when there's something there that a teacher would need input, I could go through the principals even to go to the teachers to bring some input. It's almost like my role between the board and the schools to represent.
I guess I'm just wondering, how do students differ from that? Or how do taxpayers differ from that? They're all people who aren't on the board, but.
They receive the agenda and they can come to the meeting at any time and speak.
Kim?
We used to have, um, the, the union president come to all of our boarding, board meetings and ETSD. Not really in the last couple of years of operation there, but before that, they would have one of their representation from their leadership be at the meetings.
But not participate, right?
No, no, just, no, they, they would come as a liaison to the information, often around budget time especially. And I know, like you would know, you can't actually work for the district and be on the board either. So, um, I think it's an interesting.
That's a matter of law, just like you can't be under 18.
Yeah, understood. I think too, the other place that I think, it's just hard, I think, sometimes for teachers to even find time in the evenings knowing that the PTO, you know, there's not, it's parent-teacher organization, but it's really just parents for the most part. So, I wouldn't want to presume to say whether or not teachers would want to be here. But I think when we've had an ETSD, teachers join us, it was sort of in a framed conversation because we wanted more, um, on-the-ground informed information around a topic that we had to make a board decision on. So that is a way to make sure that we're getting boys in in the context of our work.
Would that be a relevant approach to students if they aren't going to be interested in budget season, for instance, to say like, we expect your commitment will be about this 50% of the meetings of the year?
Yeah, I, you know, that's not a question that we asked the people that we talked to. I did have one superintendent say to me that it always worked out that at least one of the students was there. So if one of them had, you know, a basketball game or whatever, they would try to make sure that the second person was there. I do think student voice is different, but let me let you two talk first. Andre?
So far, I've heard um, representation in singular. And I'm not sure if you're looking at the plural representation, but has there been any models that have had student representation from multiple communities under one district? And I, if, and it's leading into, if it has been the case that they've tried to capture representation from each community that feeds the school, would we also be looking at one member from each community or at least putting the, the, the question out and then if they've come forward, so be it, if not, we.
So what they, what, the folks I spoke to, the, the students who were chosen at the high school level were responsible for communicating with each of the schools in the district once a month and bringing back to the board if there were things on the students' minds or, you know, the kinds of activities that were going on in that school. It might be connecting to student government in that school if it exists or a group of student leaders, um, however that might be chosen. But that's how it seems to be done is that this, the junior and senior, all the people we've talked to have used that model. Two students, one junior, one senior, who's, the junior serves for two years. So they serve for two years, except the first year of the senior, but just to serve one. But they are responsible for reaching out to all the schools.
Okay, so it's not looking at representation from each community.
District.
It's just a district level.
The district, yeah. Oh, I know, I'm sorry. I was just going to say about the teacher around the board, some, on the U46 board, some of the best meetings that we, uh, in my opinion, were the ones when we called the teachers in to give a presentation, a group of teachers like on proficiency-based grading or multi-tiered systems and a team of teachers come and give. And some of them are opportunities for them to really explain some challenges and really be honest and candid with the board about what they're, what's happening in the, in the building from their, from the educator's perspective. And I think that we can do that. I would, I would love to be able to invite to more, um, educators to come and, and help us make, inform what decisions are on the table. I, I think that might be a better model than having that around the table. To me, it's different from student voice, uh, because all of our work is about outcomes for kids. And, uh, and having those kids at the table seems like a different, kind of a different ask.
I think, I think you really do learn a lot from their day-to-day needs, challenges. It's very valuable. Those were very valuable.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other, are there other, is there other information that board members would like before they're asked to make decisions probably in January?
Kim? I might add is that I, it, we might be able to make some follow-up phone calls on some of the specific questions, but to that onboarding idea, really knowing what you're getting into, it feels like a roles and responsibilities conversation. And we, when we very first met with the kids, we talked a little bit about sort of what this version of work is versus if they were singularly interested in dress code in their building or something that was very building-specific, that this is different than that. And I think initially, they might have been thinking sort of more building-based advisory council. And then as they came to understand, they understood the differences and, you know, might see themselves in one role over the other. I don't think that those are mutually exclusive. I just think we're only responsible for one of those things. And the part that we're responsible for, I think, can be well benefited by a student voice. But I do think I'd like to know if any of the places that are doing it had sort of written roles and responsibilities.
They do.
And sort of, um, orientations that we're talking about.
They do.
We would have orientations if we didn't keep having, you know, some of us have been doing this for a while, but we would want to do that, I think, in our own board development anyway for any board member.
The students did their own research too. And the students who reached out to the students who served on these boards got in addition to their own comments about what that experience was like, they were also able to get some job descriptions that we, that we can look at to modify for ours. They have, they're, a couple of districts have it spelled out and we're going to look at that. And just for, for, um, the proposal will be a draft that we'll bring to you and hopefully an action item on the 16th. And, uh, Kim and Martha and I will meet with the students hopefully, uh, next week. No, on the first week, next, in the first week, yeah, Christmas Day, we're going to meet with the students and talk about that. Second week.
12th of January, I think is what we're hoping.
So those are our, our next steps.
So we do think with the next board package, we'll have it on the agenda that it's an action item, but the draft of the sort of final draft of the recommendation from the group to be informed by the students will come over the weekend. It won't be in the package.
Kim?
Would it be possible, like, I mean, I don't care if it's elected by students or picked by interview or what, but if it would be possible at some stage to get some sort of a statement from the student about either why they're interested or like, you know, what do you hope to accomplish by being involved in board conversations about A, B, and C topic that we want to hear from them about or something like that? Before I like, I'm like, yes, please join. It's knowing that the answer isn't like, I got elected because I have a funny last name and so all of my friends voted for me. Which is how we chose a lot of things.
I was, I was actually worried about that, Kim. Um, I was very, um, encouraged by the conversation I had with the superintendent in Rutland who said, all of the students in the 17 years they've been doing it, um, who got elected were ones who were really serious about wanting that kind of experience.
And I will just say that this group of kids that we're working with are outstanding and their commitment and their passion about getting this to be, to, to actually to come to fruition is really, it's really motivating. They're, they're incredible.
I think coming out of the Voices for Education work, we were talking about it being a tangible action that would reflect what we heard throughout that month and the body of work. It isn't just student voice on the board certainly, but that is a tangible action that, um, I think we can undertake and wouldn't have to wait a year to do. And it would align us with many of our peers that most MMU, CBU, South Burlington, Winuski are all have student representation. I think. So it's not out of the norm. And it is responsive to what we've heard and, and we're certainly far more to have education reflect student voice in all ways. But this is certainly a start. So, but a letter of interest.
I had, I guess I have one concern. And it's because through the years, I've seen boards decide to do something. And boards don't always follow through and it ends up being the superintendent's responsibility. I think with the merger happening and Beth being new, Brian being new, I think if we go forward with this, I would be concerned that we make sure this is a board, uh, thing that we're doing and that we take care of the orientation with aid from central office. But I don't think it should be, um, the responsibility. I just a little worried about that part of it because boards have a tendency to give up on doing something. Oh yeah, that's your responsibility. So.
I think we're pretty committed to this.
I think so, it has.
Right. And, uh, it's a good point to think about.
Although I'd love to work with the students.
Might be a nice change for you. Okay, are we ready to move on to policy?
Policy will be quick, because we cannot find a common date. And I think one of the things is Paul and I trying to get a date and then the three board members. It looks like after, in January. I just can't, I cannot find a time.
The farther out.
Yeah, so actually, um, Paul is traveling out of country. So I'm even thinking like January 15th. That far out. But, um, what I will do is put a doodle calendar together and you can fill in some dates and times. Well, I have it ready to go to you, but I had to get Paul's dates to confirm. I am, I'm sorry. I have been trying. One of the most frustrating things I've done.
We did ask the question about painful things, trying to have a policy. Kim?
I was just going to ask to make sure. I don't recall that there was anything that was so burning that if we didn't get a policy.
Right, right.
So we had our mandatories and we have the handful of others that you guys really needed to be able to be operational. And so what's that next round of work is to figure out what else is either recommended or what policy, previous policies become procedures. Is that what I remember? I just wanted to, that sounds like, you can take whatever time you guys need to shake your head.
Okay, um, local board and statewide updates. Nothing from local boards, but, um, statewide, four of us, yeah, went to Northfield on Monday. Who wants to start talking about that? Beth?
Sure. Um, so there were quite a few from Essex Westford School District, which was good, a lot of administrators. We were placed at tables, um, so we were not working together. We were with, um, networking across the state, which was good. We first heard from Rebecca Holcomb, um, and this human resource, the secretary of human, um, human services at that they're partnering on the pre-K and looking at that 166 act and coming with some recommendations going into the legislation. And so those recommendations I thought were great. I was, I was pleased by that and taking off some of the, um, duties of the district now and bringing them to the agency of education. Where, where it comes to, uh, public pre-Ks and trying to organize all that, not the ones at the schools, but the others. And I know as a superintendent from my last district to oversee some private pre-Ks as a superintendent and make sure the person's licensed, it just got kind of crazy. So that's a, and that's a somebody's job at the district office. So I think that that would be helpful. And then, well, yeah, that's good for me. Somebody else can be. And then, well, yeah, that's good for me. Somebody else gets to be.
The beginning of the day was to outline the current state and some of the sense of urgency with regards to economic pressures and also outcomes that were either hitting, need to hit differently, or need to hit more substantially. So it created a good set, especially at tables in which I had three educators, superintendent, a series of people, a couple of board members, a legislator. So it was a good level set. And we went through a process of trying to then uncover some of what we were agreeing with, what we wanted to challenge, what we felt uncomfortable with. And some of that was, you know, there was some excitement that though we're not perfectly timed at all for this budget cycle, the conversation has to begin sometime. And so people felt like there was some unifying around the conversation and some issues that might be possible.
Just focused on the governor's thought from cradle to career. And then looking at that budget, the education budget, the pre-K 12 budget is a big chunk of the pie. And how does that spread out so that there's more to the cradle and more to the career, which I worry about because what does that mean for the pre-K public school system with less resources? Even though I agree totally that we need pre-K and looking at career too, but scared.
To that point exactly, in my instant gratification mode, I'm sitting there with my computer and on the AOE website trying to figure out how many, I know we've got about 80,000 students pre-K 12.
Yeah.
How many are 3-4? How many are in higher ed? So I could not parse, I could not gather that data. But I'm thinking the pie is as it is because I don't know that we have that same concentration. That, just by virtue of that would lend itself to the fact that we've got more bodies being served in that. It was a very sort of misleading representation of the facts. If that were, I was curious about those facts. It still may be that proportionally we're, you know, per capita more. And that may very well be the case, and that is, you know, as we heard, there are some schools with 10 kids in them.
Yeah.
This is less about the way our immediate catchment area does business than it is about the situation in a shared educational funding system being greatly impacted by what is probably not, is probably also not serving kids as well. Where the environment might be nine kids and they're all girls in, you know, third, fourth, and fifth or something like that, where they're trying to teach fourth through sixth grade because collectively that's 10 kids. It's, there are places where it's just not serving the best interests of kids in the morality and the geographic area can answer some of it, but not when you're seven miles apart. And when you think about, I mean, Essex is a big geographic area, as is Westford. And so we may not have some of those same challenges, but we all share them because if they're, you know, how they are are not being addressed is impacting all of us in our, in the cost drivers, in that 9.4 cents that's, we're gonna come out of the box with if nothing is done differently.
Yeah.
I liked to hear some of the talk about the human services piece to see if there's some movement to think about how the opioid crisis and the governor's six fewer workers, three fewer students, and one baby born to opioids every day in the state. So that is his mantra, I think, for this term, six, three, one. And so I think he's going to continue on that. And if we could get to meaningful collaborative conversation with pre-K and the Agency of Human Services, we are certainly bearing the cost of that not being handled well. Every single day with kids readiness to learn as they come into our buildings. So it would be awesome if there was some movement happening on that. At least there was conversation happening on it, and I know that's been an intention for a long time. But hearing Rebecca and Go-Bay. Go-Bay, standing out there and delivering information together was more than I've seen or heard in a long time.
Promising.
Well, I think one of the things that the day set up for me is that there's actually, you know, there's a series of issues, and I think the longer-term issue is that in many ways Vermont is heading in an unsustainable path for just its aging.
Yeah.
And so education is a little bit of a proactive approach at when we just don't have enough workers in order to support the aging community. We've got to create an education system that becomes affordable, not just for its affordability, but also for its attractiveness to try to bring people in. So we, you know, like, we, that's the long-term crisis. The long-term crisis is that Vermont's aging. And like, we've got to figure this out and partly through the process of, I feel like it's cradle to career is one of the longer plays. It's like make that super-strong, affordable, sustainable, and hopefully we change the paradigm.
I think a lot of people were making the point that education is part of what makes Vermont attractive right now. So we have to be careful in this push to affordability that we don't reduce the quality of our system to the point that that's not something that makes Vermont attractive anymore. Kim?
Apparently though, it's not attractive in places that have no students in the fifth grade. So there's probably still tweaks that we can make.
Yeah.
It's not a statewide delivery.
There are lots of challenges in rural parts of the state. Not the least of which is we still don't have broadband infrastructure. It's a challenge for schools, but it's a real challenge if businesses are looking at those places. One, one part of the day that didn't get a lot of discussion, I thought, that I found very interesting is that the legislature authorized a new position in the Department of Education. And they've hired someone into the position, and he is, I'm probably not gonna say this right, but he is charged with looking at how to do work-based learning better. And they have a draft outline that starts in middle school and would have kids doing shadowing and having job experiences. And it goes along with personalized learning plans. It also had a real focus on connecting students with technical centers, starting in seventh grade. So it's a draft proposal, but I thought it showed a lot of promise. Marla, did you have a question?
I was just thinking, when we're talking about our numbers and we're a large district and the opportunities in Vermont, I'm thinking on the news, listening to a parent talk about having to merge and have a child on a bus for an hour, hour and a half in the morning, hour, hour and a half in the afternoon. I mean, I grew up on a bus, an hour in the morning, an hour in the afternoon. And I just think how lucky we are to live where we do. We have a large district, but it still isn't as extreme. So sometimes I think, and I have a tendency that I think we all do this in this area, that sometimes we're a little arrogant about maybe the districts that have only five students in a certain class, but what's the solution? What's in the best interests of the child? I don't think it is being on a bus. You know what I mean? And we don't have the broadband. So I feel like torn. I mean, I'm really torn. I don't wanna see education costing a lot of money for the state. But yet, when it comes down to the individual students, what's in the best interest?
Well, it was pointed out yesterday that a lot of these small schools are within five to seven mile radius of each other. You know, somebody stood up yesterday and said, I don't want my kid on the bus for 45 minutes. Well, frankly, my daughters were on the bus for 45 minutes every morning. Now, we had students that lived over from Silly Hill in Westford. It's only one family, and I think they're all gone through the system now. But, you know, they were on the bus for well over an hour. So it isn't outside what goes on in our district. And, you know, I think you have to optimize what's best for kids. And they are at the state level looking at geographically isolated schools and treating them differently. But many of these schools are not geographically isolated. The superintendent in Rutland Northeast is trying to combine, I can't remember how many schools, maybe four or five.
Three schools with 30 students.
Right, but, right. And within a five mile radius, and getting tons of pushback. And keeping all of the schools, but making one, I'm not gonna have this action.
Reconfigure them.
But reconfigure them. So one's a pre-K to two, one's a three to five, one's a six to eight. So nobody would lose a building in their community, but they could educate kids more efficiently. Tons of pushback from parents, so.
I don't think that's out in the media and out in the literature. I, you know, I think when people are interviewing, they wanna interview the people or they want on the TV the people that are the extremes. It would be great if there was more, I didn't know that, what you just said. I mean, I'm watching the news and I'm taking it from the news. So how the state's challenge is to get that communicated correctly then.
It will be interesting to see what comes out. You know, we had group discussions at tables and we submitted those discussions and they're supposed to be putting them together and, you know, pushing them back out. We'll see what that looks like. Kim?
At my table, I had a teacher who was also, I think, on the executive committee of the NEA or something, and a couple of board members, myself and another, and a superintendent and a specialty director. But the superintendent was from a district that serves 10, 10 boards. And within that SU had just unified, I think, they will be down to five boards. And one of the things that struck me most about what he said was how much he appreciated being able to have the bigger picture strategic conversation that we were having around that table, because he was doing five study committees at once. He is serving 10 boards right now, and then will be down to five. And is not able to be an educational leader in the way he would like to be to optimize opportunities for students. And I believe at least one of those districts does not operate a school. It's a non-operating district. We may not have ever heard about that here in Tiddon County, but, or maybe St. George. St. George is a non-operating district, no longer. They're part of the unified district in Champlain Valley. But that exists, there's lots of them. As a matter of fact, someone came before the state board to make a claim and they were from a non-operating district and they were looking to essentially protect themselves from being forced to be part of a different district. They don't operate a school. So it is, some of that is just, you shake your head and you wonder what's going on. But he is serving that board in the same way he's serving, you know, he has one board that is pre-K 12 among those 10. And it's consuming similar amounts of time, and it is a disservice to kids. And there was a lot of conversation at the panels about realizing opportunities for kids through these mergers. I love every time I get to hear MMU talk about it because they're kind of a couple of years ahead of us. And I get this glimpse into where we can go with opportunities. Or now, they did interbuilding choice, like letting them choose their elementary schools. Now they're able to do a language immersion program. You know, it's just really awesome to be able to see those that are a little bit ahead of us and to hear those opportunities as they exist for kids, because that was really the focus of it. A little bit of my fear is that some of those that are most resistant to the notion of unifying maybe weren't there or weren't able to hear what was being described on two separate panels about what's been able to happen for kids and communities and taxpayers. Like big savings in smaller communities around things that they've done that have dramatically improved their offerings at their high school because they were down to like one math teacher in the building. And, you know, things that are hard for us to imagine here, but are happening all over.
I mean, I think, you know, Marla's point, I mean, I think of our points where we are in our merger and, you know, there's a loss in everything. There's a, if we don't recognize that, we're already starting with kind of one hand behind our back. And then you add from like loss of either loss of identity or loss of tradition or loss of past practice, now you start to bring in fear. Because, you know, when we start talking about getting down to five to one, that's 2,200 school employees that have to lose their job to get us to five to one.
Across the state.
Across the state. So, you know, you start, you can imagine that this amplifies so loudly. And we've, and if there isn't something that we're moving towards, that fear and that loss is gonna be paralyzing. That's the only energy in the equation. I think it's interesting, I mean, as I sat there and listened to Scott and even Rebecca, listened to the AOE and the governor's office, you know, they're really trying to paint a vision. What can we be instead? What could we do? You know, and trying to create that sense of pain where we are, like, we can't stand still. Like, we're not getting the outcomes we need, we're not serving the kids. So we have to move, and trying to get that to be more of a pull energy so that the pain and the loss have something to counteract it. Because right now, if it's just like, believe me, it's gonna be better, that's never gonna overpower fear and loss. So that's where we are. I mean, and those, you can imagine it. You can imagine where Westford would be right now if we were talking about, you know, these kinds of decisions. They're not in those numbers, but it's real. And that's our future right now. Hopefully, we create a vision that pulls everyone forward, including taxpayers.
Right. This scary part for me about Governor Scott's piece was that, you know, he still has no new taxes, no new fees focus. And yet, he has like an $80 million hole to fill in the education fund. And I just don't see how that's gonna happen, frankly. But I guess we'll know in two or three weeks what his proposal is, right? Any last questions?
Did you hear anything about the, the too many districts merged, creating a $31 million bubble?
Didn't come up. I've read it, but I didn't, no, it didn't create a hole. But there, but that is, that is the amount of money that is spent. That's not what's creating the hole.
Because that's, that's the total, they talked some about that at the VASBO meeting, and it was mentioned that that's the total of the five years of tax relief. But that's also over a seven-year period of time.
Okay.
So that helped me understand how that math feeds into it a little differently than a $31 million bill.
Yeah, it's more manageable.
Was there any, it may be premature, but was there any inclination or takeaways from what will happen to the districts that do not merge?
That's really a state board issue. And I think it's going to be very interesting to see what the state board has the courage to do what needs to be done. Now, the ones that don't want to merge can submit an alternative plan to the board. I just read that Danville's in the process of doing that because the merger they tried to do got voted down. So I, I think the state board's going to be asking a lot of questions about how sustainability opportunities for students and what it's costing the whole state to maintain something. And they will take into account things like how far students would have to go if that school weren't open and so forth. Any other questions? Okay. So, board agenda for January 2nd. Anybody have anything that we wouldn't see when we look at the work plan and our general, our general topics?
Budget will start on the 23rd.
Oh, not the 16th, no?
No.
No.
You know, we're, my, the plan is to be bringing things like, we just started talking about October 1, and we'll take a look at some enrollments, so we'll be leading up to it. But we'll be, right now, the budget sessions that we put up on the board last, two weeks ago, were that we start a budget session on the 23rd, then it's the next one, then we have a regular meeting, then another budget session, another regular meeting.
So that's a regular meeting?
The 7th is regular.
Okay. Messages to the community. I think the student staff ratio is an important takeaway.
Make that 5.4 really bad.
I already got it.
I think our discussion about, you know, student representation is a good one, and we should start.
Putting that out there.
Yeah, putting it out there that we're actively considering it.
Yeah. It might be worth saying that we got our equalized people count and it's 1.5% higher. So at least in that measure, we're not declining. Because that's one of the conversations at the state level.
Does that mean that if, if our, like, bodies in seats is declining, but that's increasing, that they think our population is harder to educate or requires more resources than previous year?
The weights, which are secondary students, poverty, and English is the second language were bringing us, yeah, to a higher level.
With the student population increasing, can we break it down per community? And how many tuition students are adding to the increase?
Tuition, the only tuition students that we count are Westford's grandfather students.
Right, but there's other students that come in from other.
They don't count as part of our equalized peoples.
So if we're seeing an increase overall, is it, is it the total district increase? Or is it broken out per community? I think.
No, it's, it's more all total district now.
So is it possible to get?
No.
You're not, okay.
No, it's not. As we submit our ADM, we did as a whole district, so you can't break it down by community or school anymore. But that's equalized peoples. I haven't looked at our ADM. It looked to me like it's higher than last year, just eyeballing it. But that's something we might want to look at.
Yep.
Any other takeaways?
Kim? I would just say, for the part where we're going to indicate the 5.4 number, just to make sure that we're defining what's included there for staff. Not, right, I mean, anybody who has a kid would know that it's not five kids in a classroom to one teacher. But I think that that gets confused even in media stories. Over the course of a story, it'll be used interchangeably, so.
Yeah, yeah, we've seen that already.
Yes.
Yeah, and I think I dropped that down. So that excludes, correct me if I'm wrong, transportation, security, food services, and pre-K services. Any other big things I missed?
Yes.
Maintenance, food service.
I did say, I did not say maintenance, I did say food services.
Security isn't included, is it?
I did say.
Transportation, pre-K, maintenance, food service. And pre-K is just a pre-class.
I don't know where security came from.
I mean, I honestly, I think it takes away.
Crossing bars, is that, was that about the crossing? The transportation, yeah, that goes in there. I don't know where security, somebody said that tonight and I was a little confused where that came from.
I dropped it down, but I'm not sure.
I don't think.
Maybe we should leave that one out.
I, I think just the general concept, things like this.
Yeah, we don't have security yet.
But.
But centralized traffic.
Centralized staff, parents, you know, office assistants in the buildings. You know, all that kind of stuff is included. Okay. All right, then I will entertain a motion that, do we need to do negotiations? No. So I'll entertain a motion that we move into executive session to discuss a student-related matter. Excellent. All those in favor say a aye. 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 Thank you.
There was no negotiation.
No negotiation.